Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the darkness hour. I see it's six o'clock and it's pitch black out there. We're going to begin tonight with our invitation by Chuck Vance from the First Brethren Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. May we all stand at this.
Father God, I just thank you so much for your wonderful love. I ask tonight that you give our council members wisdom and discernment as they are doing business, Lord, for our city, our community. And I just ask, Lord, that you bless them, that you bless this meeting, and that the people of Oak Hill and even Fayette County will see the good that's going on here. We love you. We praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now call to order the city council meeting November 4th, 2024, 6:00 PM, Oak Hill, West Virginia. We'll now have our roll call.
Mayor Charles Briscoe.
Here.
Councilors from Ward 1, Terry Van Buskirk.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Diana Janey.
Here.
Councilors from Ward 2, Tim Buskus.
Question.
PJ Elder.
Here.
Chris Gill.
Here.
Council at Large, Hannah Bass.
Here.
Thank you. You've all read the minutes. Can we get a motion to approve our minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
May we have a second?
A second.
We have motion and second to approve all the minutes. All those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. Can we do the same for the treasures report?
We include last month's in the treasures report.
So we'll need a motion to include last month's.
I'll make a motion to approve September and October's treasures report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second. Did we approve the treasures report? All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed?
Opposed.
No one opposed? The ayes do have it. Motion is carried. We have no correspondence. No correspondence, okay. No citizens comments tonight. Nobody wants to talk to us tonight. Okay, well, that's fine. We have a presentation tonight. The Spirit of Oak Hill Award. This award will be presented to the brethren church.
And we're gonna have Jason Gill come up and present the award. We think he's probably the number one customer there. We're gonna let him present the award.
So it has a place in my heart. I love it dearly. And a couple of notes here. Pistos Coffee was designed for community. Pistos supports the community by using their tips received to support local organizations such as schools and groups like the FCA, the V Tech Women's Ballroom Team, Humane Society, High School Area Storm Relief, Youth Groups, Young Life in Fayette County, and the Soca Gardens. They provide a friendly quiet environment for customers throughout the community and beyond. They have helped support organizations financially as well as place for small groups and book clubs to meet. I personally like using it for meetings. It's quiet. It's quiet. It's peaceful. They provide volunteer opportunities for high school and college students to volunteer and receive community service for their hours of graduation. They employ three at this time and the rest is volunteer. Mike Molle presented.
Yeah, but I shot this up then.
Okay, that's enough.
Beautiful smiles over here.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. You have. And now we have the individual award. When our committee met, we thought that this was a great person to present this award to. He does a lot around the community. You'll see him out a lot of times. So we're gonna let Jackie Gill come and present this.
Keeping this as prize was really hard. When Demeter called and called me, I cried, and it was on his birthday, and I couldn't be more proud. Thank you, Jason, for all that you do for our family and our community. And I'm so proud to know you, be married to you, and to be your best friend. Will you please come and accept this award?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
I think you all know we have seen Jason in some odd places.
Gotta get there. Thank you.
I understand why nobody's just saying.
I have to show it to work a clock because I'm a counselor or a commissioner for the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our unfinished business. Only one item today. That's the vacant building registration fees and the public hearing will be December 9th, 2024.
Oh, that, we didn't have enough time to advertise from the time of the meeting last week till this meeting. So we'll have to have it in December. And that's, that will be in the paper this week and the next week and one other time. I just added one other time closer to the meeting date. So that will.
Will that meeting be here?
Yes, it'll be right before our council meeting.
Okay.
So that's all we have. We didn't, there's not.
All right, number one, new business. Number two, consider lifting the sunset date and make other revisions to the recreational trail vehicles ordinance, OHMC 10 dot 12.
I included that in your package for y'all to review to see if you had any suggestions. Right now, the sunset date, I think, is.
March 31st.
Twenty-five.
Since 12 oh one.
So you can choose, I guess, just to eliminate that sunset date, or were there other changes that you wanted to make in the ordinance?
Chief, did you have time to reveal it yet?
I did. One change I would request, if we remove the helmet, wearing the helmet, the state doesn't require that. And I believe that's probably the reason it's not being strictly enforced in town. That's one suggestion I had. I think the other parts of the ordinance are sufficient, working out good with the speed and the times, the age and the drivers.
Chief, can you, because I don't know. Does that apply to like, that doesn't apply to motorcycles, right? That applies just to like side by sides, correct?
ATVs and UTVs, yes.
Okay. There is a helmet law.
There is a helmet.
Motorcycles.
It will remain in effect. But we can't.
So this, right, but this ordinance is for ATVs and UTVs, not motorcycles. So, okay.
How does our city ordinance, I mean, I was reading some on that. I haven't really had a chance to go over it totally. Now, we do require that any that are road on the road, UTVs or ATVs, have to have insurance and a tag, right? That they do have to have insurance.
Am I right on that view?
I think state law requires that. The reasoning behind that was that with the Rimfire Trail, there was discussion among the management of Rimfire Trail at the time this ordinance was initially being passed, that they were going to require insurance. Yeah. And our ordinance, if you read, requires that once the Rimfire Trail is up and running, doing business in Fayette County, that one of the requirements is for you to be legally, be legal to operate one within the city of Oak Hill, that you had to have a Rimfire membership sticker on your vehicle. And we were one of, we deferred that insurance question to the management of the Rimfire Trail or the Hatfield McCoy Trail. So that's why it's not directly addressed in our ordinance.
So they don't have any restrictions at all? I mean, they don't have to have a license. They don't have to have insurance.
Be a licensed driver to operate one. You can't be under the age of sixteen and out here riding around without a driver's license. So you can't do over twenty-five mile an hour regardless of the speed limit. You can't ride during dark hours. The helmet was one.
So they do not have to have a helmet on?
Right now, they do. Under state law, you do not have to have that. Therefore, like I said, I don't, I believe that's one of the reasons that our officers are hesitant to enforce the helmet law part of our ordinance.
So the state doesn't require?
State doesn't require it. You can come from out of town on a state road without a helmet, and once you cross the city limits, you can be in violation. But like I say, I think that's why it's not being strictly enforced. But all in all, I think the ATVs and the UTV ordinance is good. I don't think we've had a, I think I have less complaints now about them than I did before that we even had an ordinance. If you recall, there was a lot of talk that they were going to be running up and down through neighborhoods all hours of the day and night. Ever, not everybody, but some were opposed of having the ordinance allowing them. I think it's been, it's come off very well, in my opinion.
Have you had any cases where one of them hits a motorized vehicle?
I do not recall, and I'm sure it would do my attention, any accidents inside city limits involving ATV or UTV.
Riding the motorcycles, they, just so the public knows.
Motorcycles are covered under a different state law, and I'm sure the state has no plans of changing the helmet law. I don't think, I haven't heard that they hit.
Rimfire Trail, I understand, will require.
Rimfire Trail will require a helmet. Of course, we would welcome anybody to wear a helmet. I think it's smart to wear a helmet. I drive one around on my property. I don't drive it out on the road. Don't wear a helmet on my property. That's just a suggestion I have. You all passed, you all changed the ordinance. That's my take on the, any changes.
What would be your take on insurance on those? You would know more than any of us would. That's the reason why I'm asking. Think that there is an issue that we may, or can we do it without?
Just so y'all are aware, most of the time when you purchase an ATV, if you're making payments, now they require you, like a vehicle, to have insurance on that vehicle, as long as you're, the bank is the lien holder.
As long as finance, he's right. I just bought one probably three weeks ago.
Yeah.
It did finance it. It was happy to carry. It's built into the payment. Not all of them's gonna be that way. A lot of them's gonna be owned. A lot of them's gonna be of such value that they probably are not worth insuring, maybe. I don't know.
Well, I was just asking your opinion.
My personal opinion, I wouldn't get out on the road without insurance.
Sounds like me. I mean.
I'm a little bit protective of what little I've got, so.
What about the liability insurance? Would that just, say, hit somebody and damage their property? That would just fall under your claim insurance.
It would fall under your own insurance matters. All everybody's vehicle policy. That's there. It has to be there. That's something we might all gather, you might all think about, or, you know, you are all, I don't think they'll do anything tonight, are you? Other than discussion. And I will maybe reach out to, and I know we did at the time, we checked with several municipalities that were close to the Rimfire or to the Hatfield McCoys. We studied it extensively. I don't think we could have studied it any more than we did at the time. Now, to be a registered, to be registered and street legal under the state code, because there's two sections of the state code that pertains to ATVs and UTVs. To be licensed, it has to be insured. You have to carry insurance on. Right? If you have a license, which some of them do in town, I would say the majority of them are not licensed, though. But the ones that are licensed do have to carry at least liability insurance.
I just wanted to see what your input would be on that, too, because I mean, I, like I said, I haven't got to read through it all, but we was kind of looking for you for being answers. One thing that probably needs to be in it, I mean, it's a little bit redundant, but that I don't recall states that you can't operate one, that you cannot operate one on US Route 19. You can't because it's federal. It has federal funding, and I think we probably should put that in our.
Put that in our ordinance. It is in the state code. But yeah, you're probably right, because we have had at least one instance where somebody was on US Route 19, thought they were improperly given a ticket.
Are they allowed to cross a perpendicular? Just like you're not.
I don't think you're allowed.
Had somebody.
Anytime, are you?
Can't drive one. I was like.
Law used to read you could cross a lined road perpendicular to get to the other side, but they done away with that when they do ATV law. You're not allowed to be on the roadway, on 19 or any interstate whatsoever.
There is a saying, at least under the street legal portion, I have to look under the other. This is our ordinance, number one, in regards to the controlled access highway system, which Route 19 is the controlled access.
Is it in there now?
It's in there in this section. I didn't, I just saw it. I didn't look. This is specifically under the street legal, recreation trail vehicle. There's another segment.
Right.
Non-street legal. I have to look, see if it's in there, but it is in here in park. It didn't say Route 19, but any controlled access.
I hit one the other day. It was my own ATV that I hit with my pickup truck.
Thank goodness you weren't in the city limit. There you go, citation.
Now, there's still a big scrape on my truck.
So I can make the, some of these changes that were mentioned and bring it back for you to look at, and if anybody has any suggestions before that time, we'll put it in there and see what happens.
Any further questions, discussion?
We need to make a motion to table this, right, Bill? Right. I'll move that we table this until next, the next regular meeting. I second that.
All right. We have a motion and second to table sunset date until the next regular meeting. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Moving to number three, consider repealing municipal code, sorry, municipal code 10 dot 04 dot 010F. Restricted areas for skateboards, inline skates, rollerblades, and bicycles.
This, our ordinance has skateboards restricted in the park where we have a skateboard park. So Jason Gill brought this to our attention, and we thought maybe it was the time to, that we needed to repeal that.
I don't know if repeal the whole thing or if we need to change, because it does have something there that talks about bicycles. I don't know that we just want to re, it's up to y'all. Do you want to repeal it, or do you want to control that the bicycles stay off the sidewalk? So people are not riding around skateboards and stuff around the sidewalk, around the park, but they stay in the designated area.
The only one that I had was number one there. I think when I copied this, it came out wrong with the wording. But the use and operation of skateboards, inline skates, rollerblades, and bicycles in the following area, which is parks, City Park and Collins Park. And just delete that whole thing.
City Park and Collins Park?
Right. Say it's okay for skateboards and bicycles in the park, in both parks.
Same in designated areas.
It's restricted in designated areas.
No, it's restricted other than designated areas. Because, and the only reason I say, I know from years past, there were some problems when it would be crowded with pedestrians in the park, games would be going on, and people were riding bikes through the, through the park.
We can do that. I guess Josh does that.
Sure. Yeah, you know, I think, I think the complexity of the issue, the complexity of the issue might merit possibly tabling this. I can assist a couple of council members within a special council, if you'd like, within the next month, and we can revisit it in December if you would like.
Well, if we're gonna table something like that, is there something that I could probably add to that then? Because I've noticed a lot up here at Skate Park, and, you know, we've already had a couple of people get hurt. And there's a lot of times I come by there and nobody has a helmet on. I think that maybe helmets may need to be required at the skateboard park.
Well, I guess we could do that, but we really, I mean, who's gonna police that? We do say they're required at the park.
Within the rules sign, it is required that they wear a helmet.
Well, I mean, I didn't, I didn't know if it was just this, or I haven't really been up there to look that much into that, but I just know whenever I go by, there's kids out there, no helmets on, everything else. And as we said, we've had a couple of people get their own broke, and that's all we need is for, you know.
I've never seen anybody with one.
Saying, every time you go up there, there's nobody with a helmet on.
I think that's covered under the recreation law that just because you provide recreation, that you, that it's their own fault if they don't follow the rules.
But it is posted on the signage, so.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. It's important to say, own personal protective equipment, not necessarily just. All the things. I think it's, I think, if you look at the sign, they did strongly encourage. Yes, you got pad on, all the things. I think it's, I think, if you look at the sign, they did strongly encourage, I believe, some might be required.
Well, I just didn't look where, you know, they could come back on us.
Is there an age limit on those helmets? Can the adults just, they don't have to follow that, do they?
Well, uh, again, within the rules, it's strongly encouraged that anybody on a skate park, uh, where, where protective equipment.
I don't know that there's a, a law anywhere. I mean, there is for bicycles, but I don't know about skate.
Out of where? You, you know, I think, I think with the city's wider rail trail, uh, and the trails that we are building out at Needleside Park, uh, you know, I think we perhaps might, might see, particularly with the trails at Needleside Park, we might end up seeing an influx of mountain bikers within the city, uh, and I think we have to be very careful with the language that we use, uh, to restrict bicycles anywhere in the city.
Well, we, I think we could still say in designated areas, and then if we want to restrict the sidewalks in the, in Collins or in City Park, then we can do that. Because, you know, we probably don't want them riding.
I don't, I don't disagree with that at all.
Yeah, so if we could do that, then we could decide where the designated areas are.
Well, I'll move to, um, table this item until, uh, Mr. Sapios prepared to, uh, make recommendations to council.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to say, to consider repealing the code ten dot zero four zero one zero F. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. Number four, considering allowing the farmer's market to use Rick Rutledge Pavilion for other uses.
Angela Perry, who is the president of the farmer's market, had asked for this to be on the agenda. However, she couldn't make it tonight. She has, she's ill, and she asked that we repeal this until next meeting.
Anyone want to offer a motion for that?
I'm just gonna table it till the next meeting.
Us.
All right, we have a motion and second that we consider allowing the farmer's market to be used, or to use Rick Rutledge Pavilion for other uses. Any further questions? All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Number five, police hiring, changing current officers from ninety day emergency hires to permanent hires.
I believe I provided everybody with copy of the civil service commission's recommendation. It is to, um, permanently hire two officers that are currently on the ninety day emergency plan, whereas being Keely Higginbotham.
I make that motion to hire Keely Higginbotham.
I second. We have a motion and a second to hire Keely Higginbotham to the Oak Hill Police Department. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you. The second one would be Officer Chase Hart. Will you probably be better?
I'll make a motion that we do that for Chase Hart.
I second.
Here, I'd like to recuse myself for the search.
I want to refuse. All those in, uh, I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
And number six, would be an appointment of a member of council to the comprehensive plan team.
We, I've already been contacted by the W, W, W Law Clinic to get started with some planning for the comprehensive teams, so, or for the comprehensive planning team. I'd like to have a member of council on that team that will be dedicated to come to the meetings and give input on that, so.
I can do that. I mean, I was on the other one.
On comp plan team?
I was on the last one.
About twenty years ago when.
Well, just on this one, we just started there, I'm lost a couple of months ago, two or three months ago. With Allison.
Did we have a team?
Yeah, I mean, we, there was several of us that met out there at Bob's.
Oh, that's that community engagement team. Okay, well, this is specifically for the comp plan.
I can do it too, but it don't matter. The rest.
I think Mr. Hannabass would be a good option for that, being that he worked with, um, on the last comprehensive plan years ago. Very familiar with that. That's just my opinion. I don't know if he'd be interested. I never mentioned it. I just, to him, I just.
I, I mean, I'll, I'll do it. Terry can do it. I, it's, that was two thousand thirteen. Wait, last comprehensive plan update. I mean, I'd, I'd be glad to do it. It's not, it's not the behind the scenes stuff. It's a whole lot of fun, Terry.
Oh, believe me, I know. I mean, I, I just, you know, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, but Bill wants to, he can.
I don't think we even have to limit it to one. It's just good to have somebody designated. That they're gonna be in the meetings and listen to.
Get built, built together.
The team.
So it's both of them.
You don't care.
I was hoping you were gonna arm wrestle for it.
I pass. We have the left hand and not my right shoulders there.
All right, number seven, we want permission to ask the county commission to allow the.
I'm, I'm sorry, should we make a form of the vote on that?
Well, we didn't really point and you volunteered. I mean.
Okay.
I didn't think we needed an action.
We need out.
Okay.
Permission to ask the county commission to allow the redirection of ARPA funds to a branding, signage, and wayfinding plan in connection with the WV, uh, WV hubcap.
So, uh, we have, since we went with a different comp plan consultant, we have some extra money. I have to go to the county commission to ask to be able to redirect that ARPA money. Uh, so the hubcap has been working with, um, Montgomery and Smithers on a wayfinding, signage, branding, and all that. So the, they have vetted, hubcap has vetted, uh, consultants, and they have the consultant that's doing that one, and they gave us a proposal to do ours as well. Stacy Thomas, well, she's not Thomas anymore. She got married, but she, um, is the leader of our hubcap team. So I'm gonna let her show you some things, and then she can answer any questions that she wanted.
Good evening, council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to, to speak with you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we're good.
Uh, as Demita said, um, I, my name's Stacy Henderson. Uh, I have been before the council a couple of times. Um, in the two years I've been, almost two years I've been working with Oak Hill to talk about hubcap and, um, the work with the community of Oak Hill. So, um, just to brief refresher, hubcap is a coaching program from the West Virginia Community Development Hub that is meant to increase leadership and capacity in the community while fulfilling, um, a kind of a big project that will, um, enable the community to have some long-term goals to work on. Um, I run our hubcap program and, uh, have coached in this program for five years at the hub. Um, as Demita also said, I'm also working with Smithers and Montgomery in the same program. Um, Smithers and Montgomery had identified that they were going to do, um, an identity finding process, branding, and wayfinding project. So, uh, in the summer, in the late summer, we put out, um, a request for proposals and received eight proposals back from a, a variety of consultants, really a, along the east coast. After a really thorough process, um, with Smithers and Montgomery, we selected Destination by Design to work with those two communities for this process. Um, after the change in the direction with Oak Hill's comp plan, the discussion came, uh, about Oak Hill potentially joining in with Smithers and Montgomery for kind of the same services, um. Uh, and I reached out to Destination by Design, and they're happy to, um, include Oak Hill, um, as well. So I'll just say, uh, part, uh, in talking with the consultant and, you know, my work with other communities through similar processes, I think there's actually a lot of strength in Smithers, Montgomery, and Oak Hill utilizing the same consultant. Um, a lot of the work that is gonna go into this is gonna be around developing the assets, um, that need to be in support of the gorge and tourism along with that. So there's a lot of shared assets between the three communities. The consultant and I both feel like it would be really advantageous, uh, to have kind of the cohesion and continuation of this work with the same consultant. I did send, um, Sean sent the, the proposal from the consultant, which would be forty-five thousand dollars to include Oak Hill in this process. Um, the hub is, will provide Oak Hill twenty thousand of that, um, as, as part of our technical assistance process. Um, so it does leave, you know, a balance of, of twenty-five thousand, if that would be the direction that, that you guys would want to go, since the county had already, um, set aside funds, you know, for something similar. I, I can't perceive why they would have an issue with, you know, reallocating for, uh, to be able to work with this. Um, the, the consultants are already scheduled for their first visit to Smithers and Montgomery, but I have talked with them, and, um, we can kind of get on the same timeline moving forward, if that's the direction that, that you guys want to go. Um, I do want to emphasize again that, that the process to select this consultant, Destination by Design, was extremely thorough with the vetting of all eight requests for proposals that we had. Um, and then a two-step interview process with, um, community members and some stakeholders that we felt would be valuable, uh, to providing feedback to, to Smithers and Montgomery. Ultimately, Destination by Design was chosen, um, because they have done a lot of work in the, the outdoor rec industry. Um, they have several, uh, several projects in West Virginia. They're based out of Boone, North Carolina. Um, so the, the Maid in the Mountains, uh, campaign of Western North Carolina is one of their most, um, most coveted, uh, projects, but they've worked with the city of Beckley. Um, they've also worked with McDowell County, the Mountaineer Trails Alliance, and then I've worked with them personally, uh, with the community of Marlington, um, and the Mon Forest Trails, or Mon Forest Towns Initiative. Um, pretty much on the same thing that, um, the proposal for Oak Hill was for. Um, so I, I'm gonna stop there and see if there's any questions, or, um, if you guys want any more specific information about any aspects.
And I did, I got those over the weekend, so this morning I put those in those share points, so I know that you may not have had a chance to work it, um, to look at the proposals, but it out, it just outlines how they would do it with the, uh, branding, the the wayfinding, even if we would want to redo our logo, that's part of it. Or if we're good with our logo and we want to use it to expand a logo for the parks, or just for Needleside Park, or Needleside Trail, or Collins Park, uh, Russell Matthew Park. You know, we can have logos for different areas. Uh, it would also include some signage, some wayfinding signage, so that we could tell people where our dog park is and where our skate park is, and, uh, so they would lay that all out. And then, and even with, you know, they would design the signs and everything that after going through a process, and then we would have to have those, the, the work actually done.
Yeah, the, the, the project is a four-phase project, just so everyone is aware, so, um, that the first phase is, uh, some analysis and, um, public engagement. Uh, then there's some, basically the identity finding, the brand strategy and the positioning. Um, and then you go and take kind of the logo and identity development process, and then the wayfinding and signage plan. I will say, um, that the proposal for Oak Hill at forty-five thousand, um, is, uh, is less than. Smithers and Montgomery had a combined, um, request, uh, they're, they're working together. Theirs was sixty-five thousand. When I went back to the consultant and asked about the potential of adding Oak Hill, they did come in at a discount, um, with, you know, adding the third community. And again, um, I think there's a, a lot of strength in the three communities using the, the same, um, consultant. Uh, I'll also say, um, I, I live in Richwood. I've been involved in the Mon Forest Towns Initiative since its inception in twenty seventeen. A lot of the work that's gonna happen in, in this project is gonna be similar to the Mon Forest Towns, um, initiative that has really helped bring those twelve communities together, uh, in a collaborative way that has really positioned them to be uh, a strong initiative moving forward. If you follow the Appalachian Regional Commission, last week Mon Forest Towns was awarded, I believe, one point four million dollars for a power grant, um, for implementation of some of their work over the next three years. So, uh, I feel like this is a really good opportunity for Oak Hill, and especially to strengthen their relationship with two other, uh, two other communities.
There's another proposal in there that mentions a regional concept. If we decide, we could also add that too, and it would be a different piece, but that's something else that we could add to try to, you know, um, the county is trying to work as a region. The NRG RDA is trying to have a regional concept, so I think that also would be good.
Yes, there is a, a regional approach that is an additional thirty thousand dollars. I'll also say I've been involved with NRG RDA on the regional wayfinding for over two years as well, um, with that committee. Due to some changes at NRG RDA, I don't think there's been the traction, um, and things moving forward as much as everyone would hope over the last couple of years. Um, but I think as we continue to move forward, that can definitely happen, and I do think, you know, that the proposal for the regional wayfinding is, is very strong as well. Um, you know, you guys know that you're gonna see the growth from the gorge, and you continue to see that. Um, outdoor rec is, is such a strong industry in West Virginia and continues to grow. This is gonna, uh, be able to position Oak Hill to really think about your future opportunities and be well-prepared for those.
And I think it would be so great to have something that when we mention that whatever, oh yeah, that's Oak Hill. That you can, you can do that in Oak Hill, or do you remember going to Oak Hill to do whatever it is, which we've had a hard time doing, because we don't have their new river gorge in our backyard. I mean, it's close, but, you know, Fat Bill, Fat Bill claims that. On that, it's in our backyard, but we can't claim it. So it's like, you know, just finding that one little thing that we can say about Oak Hill besides our, the oak tree that's at Hill.
I also say this process will be highly, uh, engaging with the community. Um, I'll invite anyone on council that, that wants to be involved. If you guys should, should go forward with this. We'll also have numerous community engagement opportunities, um, for the public to be involved. This is not a, a process that takes place in the dark. Um, it is our goal to, to engage the community, uh, throughout this process.
This is like a year, two years, how is that work?
Um, the actual project would be, it would conclude around June of next year. So, um, work would kick off really in the next couple of weeks, um, with kind of the, the final product by, by June of next year.
Before this goes, though, we ha, I mean, before we can do this, we have to get the blessing from the commission, the county commission to reallocate, because they had, they had allocated so much for our comprehensive plan, and we chose the law clinic. It saved a ton of money. So, and even with this, that's still coming in less than what they had originally allocated for.
Well, I'm hoping that we can use the rest of that to implement some of the, the things that they suggest.
So you're, you're wanting us to give the, a blessing to go to them and ask for that?
Yes.
And, and I'm happy to accompany Demita to that, that meeting as well. Um, I, I coach the Smithers and Montgomery team as, as well, and, um, I, I, I just think that there's a a, a huge opportunity here for the three communities.
I'd like to make that motion that we ask the county commission to allow the redirection of the ARPA funds for this. I'd like to make that motion that we ask the county commission to allow the redirection of the ARCA funds for this.
Second. I'll second that.
We have a motion and second that we had permission to ask the county commission to allow the redirection of ARCA funding. All those in favor?
Ah, all opposed.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Have a good evening.
Number eight is reviewing resumes for the city clerk treasurer position. It's, this is an anticipated executive session. And so is the next, and so we might, I do them both while we're in there.
If, if we anticipate it, I think it's going to take a little bit of time. Can we skip, suspend the rules and go ahead and get our department reports? And get our department reports. I'll make a motion that we suspend it and go ahead and get the department reports so that they don't have to sit here while we're in the executive session.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and second that we suspend this and move along with our department reports. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Okay. And our department reports, um, they're in your packets. Most of you already know, uh, the police report was just a little late, but it's going in there. So you'll be able to read that. I'm going to give you, two hundred and sixty-four citations issued, only one parking violation. That's wonderful. Um, total rush forty and not too bad at all. So sixteen felony arrests, twenty-four misdemeanor arrests. All right, well, I'll go ahead and break and we are now, oh, sorry, we have to accept. We have to accept the reports and then we have to do MSK. I'm sorry.
Uh, this time I'd like to just talk about, we talked about gutters and downspence. Now this is, is the reminder to keep your gutters clean. Cause if they're full of debris or in, and they're completely clogged or just a little bit clogged. Um, you can damage your roof and your foundation. You can flood your yard, kill your landscaping, um, and it can harm the value of your home. Clean them regularly, even if you have gutter guards, we could gutter guards. And it's a great way to prep for incoming rainstorms. Um, but it's ideal to clean your gutters at least twice a year to clean off your spring and fall foliage. Not how there's little trees growing in. And you can hire a service or you can do it yourself. But don't get on a ladder if you can't climb a ladder.
All right, we can get a motion to accept all department reports.
I'll make a motion.
May we have a second please?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept all department head reports. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? All right, thank you. Now we will move into our executive session. Will we have a motion to do that please? Anyone?
I'll make that motion right after we begin the executive session.
Second.
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second and we move into executive session. All those in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, Ben?
So you want us to give you back these?
We are.
Do you want us to hang on?
We are live. We will need a motion to end this executive session and come back to our regular session.
Make the motion that we come in, uh, out of our executive session, back into regular session.
I second it.
All right, you have a motion and a second to come out of our executive session, which regarding the reviewing of resumes for the city clerk and treasurer position and the update on the former college and school property. Any questions? All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? We now resume our regular council session. We've already gone through our committee reports. Do we have any counsel comments?
I'm just city manager. I have just a question. Something was mentioned and and a long time ago, we had was looking into something and I never heard anything about it and I was just kind of curious. Do we ever get anywhere with our copyright or trademark or whatever on our city logo?
Fill out that thing.
You can have the notice. Thank you for the end of the executive session.
Anyone else?
Is there, is there any update on the bank building?
We have gotten, uh, letters or letters of interest. I get some questionnaires in from realtors. And we had canceled. We couldn't, we didn't have our, um, billing commission meeting last week because I forgot to set up the notice. So we had to reschedule. And I'm trying to get with the chair to do that and we haven't been able to.
I have two questions. How many have you pulled since the city?
Uh, around sixty.
And then an absence of bill like, do you really direct questions to?
We're, uh, whatever you want to call it. Aaron Radcliffe is doing those. So if the people were just calling here, then we'd get in touch with him.
So I could just call here and tell Sherry and then she'll.
Tell Lisa.
You have to tell Lisa. I'm sorry. That's okay.
And then, yes, and she will get in touch with him.
Because the lady, uh, Harlem Heights is, is about issues. I'll just call.
I have a question. Uh, I have people come to me and ask you about what are, where you should sow our tree branches and stuff in behind the school. Do you think they will ever open that back up? How do you think so?
Because it's, it's part of that park that we had money from
Okay.
The land and water conservation zone. So it has to be used for recreation.
Okay, good.
All right. They can take it to the solid waste authority in Rana County. Or Rana County landfill. They take it, they shred it, they make mulch. That would be a good place. A little small field.
Not if you take it on the last Thursday of the month.
Last Thursday every month is free day.
Yes, free day.
Free day.
As of today, they cannot burn it. The governor issued a burn ban today. A statewide burn.
Statewide.
Statewide governor justice issued a statewide burn ban. All outdoor burning, including campfires, fire pits, everything.
Barrels.
Barrels.
That behind my mom, this guy.
Illegal.
Twelve, fifteen hours a day.
It's illegal. Who's answer that, Chris?
See, who's saying, is it the police department?
It's the police department, I believe.
Yeah.
Serious.
We are in fire season right now. Councilwoman Chaney, we're in fire season. In which you're not allowed to burn. Except for brush on your property. After between the hours of five P M. and seven A M. Were the only time you were allowed to burn. So if they're burning anything else other than tree limbs on their property, it's an illegal burn.
Dexter dives and whatever he doesn't want.
Uh, if you're burning anything other than brush on your property, it's illegal. And they could be cited for that between, and it's only allowed during those hours. But now the governor, because of the dry conditions and the moisture, no water, no rain. Has issued a statewide burn ban, all outdoor burning.
Doesn't matter if you live in a city limits or not.
Doesn't matter where you, doesn't matter anything.
Well, we're getting a bunch of rain coming up. We're open.
Yeah, supposed to think about Wednesday is when it's supposed to start, ain't it?
I, I had a question. It sort of came up this evening. Have we had a recent update from Jeff Losk and the Rimfire Trail and?
The last that we had was that they were not coming this way. They couldn't, they had a, um, a dispute with the land.
Oil company.
Whoever owns that land there, they couldn't.
But I mean, was it, did it kill the project or is it delaying it or?
It was killed pretty much.
Jeff told me, because I talked to him personally on the phone, and he told me that it is it's not dead. But the coal company or something up here.
Off Lincoln.
They are wanting to see whether or not they're going to actually go back in and strip again. And that's what they're looking at to see if there's other coal that they want to get. He said if it would happen, the earliest would probably be in twenty seven. He said, but you know, he, he said, I can't say that it's dead because I asked the same question. I said, well, if they're doing that, that's dead. Well, you know, he kind of beat around the bush here a little bit on it, but that was the last report. you know, he kind of beat around the bush here a little bit on it, but that was the last report that he sent me. And he, you know, he told me if it changes or any, he'd email me. So that's the last report I got from him. That was I can, I
I mean, some, I mean, nothing pressing, but sometimes could you give him a call and see just? Few marks, so maybe maybe something's changed.
Let's hope. I'd love to see that come in. And Trailhead, be at Lotgally or something. I mean, that would be the perfect place. But it would actually help this city. I believe.
Any other comments, announcements, future agenda? I'd like to congratulate the senior center. They did four hundred meals last month. I'd like to congratulate El Rio's. Uh, they've been in business now in Oakville for thirty years. So that's good. And more, oh, congratulations, the Haynes Insurance, new business started today. Happy grand opening today. So I think that's pretty much it. And, uh, early happy birthday to Grandma. She'll be a hundred two in about four hours. So that'd be one.
Awesome.
Yes. So if all minds are clear, we can get a motion. Dismiss?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. We have to schedule the.
Schedule a special meeting.
I make a motion that we schedule a special meeting for November the fourteenth at five o'clock.
Can we get a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made, seconded, that we have our special meeting on the fourteenth at five PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion is carried. Now, all minds are clear.
Did, did we say that this is Sherry's last meeting?
She's hoping.
We're gonna keep her.
Well, I'm not.
Well, we don't want her to leave, are we?
She's going to the chair. You're not going anywhere. Be a little cold in here tonight, but you.
Sherry, if this is your last meeting, thank you.
You've been a big help.
Don't tell I still say your name.
I know. I, I miss that spot very badly. She said that she could be here at the next meeting, but she wouldn't type the minutes.
I didn't say I wouldn't type the minutes, but you're not gonna have time to type. Yeah, we got the Christmas parade.
Thank you for all of you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Big miss.
We'll be having a party. I'll let you all know.
All right, man, we're gonna talk.
We're all set? All right. Consider yourselves adjourned.
ADHD's done.
I don't have ADHD.
And I may not. All of you, just say aye. All opposed? All right, motion carried.
House.
Thank you, sir.
They used to sit. In a car. I see it all day.
Seconds.
No.